Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tamiami Trail East, Third Floor, Naples, Florida, 34112. January 14th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, Chair, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Burt Saunders, District 3, Vice Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Andy Salise, District 2. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4. Notice: All persons wishing to speak on agenda items must register prior to presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All registered speakers will receive up to 3 minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Requests to petition the Board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this Board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 as amended by Ordinance #2004-05 and 2007-24 requires that all lobbyists shall before engaging in any lobbying activities, including but not limited to addressing the Board of County Commissioners, register with the clerk to the Board at the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation, in order to participate in this proceeding, you are entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Collier County Facilities Management Division located at 3335 East Tamiami Trail, Suite 1, Naples, Florida, or call them at (252) 8380. Assistant listening devices for the hearing impaired are available in the Facilities Management Division. Lunch Process is scheduled for 12 noon to 1 p.m. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. 1A, Reverend Beverly Duncan of Naples United Church of Christ. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. 2A: Approval of Today's Regular, Consent and Summary Agenda as Amended. Ex parte disclosure provided by commission members for consent agenda. 2B: Selection of Chairman and Vice Chairman. 2C: Recommendation that the Board appoint its members to offices of the Board of County Commissioners, the Community Redevelopment Agency, the Tourist Development Board, the Community and Economic Development Board, the Public Safety Coordinating Council and the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council and to authorize new chairs for both the Board of County Commissioners and the Community Redevelopment Agency to execute all documents approved at both this meeting and those documents which were previously approved but are pending signature. 2D: December 10th, 2019, BCC Meeting Minutes. Item 3: Awards and Recognitions. 3A: Employees. 3A1: 20 years at 10 days. 3A1A: 20 years, Mike Levy, Facilities Management. 3A1B: 20 years, Janet Pereira, Library. 3A1C: 20 years, Consuelo Thomas, Operations and Regulatory Management. 3A2: 25 years at 10 Ds. 3A2A: 25 years, Osman Kande, Parks and Recreation. 3A2B: 25 years, Jonathan Herndon, EMS. 2A2C: 25 years, Michelle Williamson, EMS. 3A3: 30 years at 10 Ds. 3A3A: 30 years, Irving Baez, Parks and Recreation. 3A3B: 30 years, Heather Sweet, Utilities Finance. 3AB: Advisory Board Members. 3AC: Retirees. 3D: Employee of the Year. 3D1: Recommendation to recognize Jolynn Mayberry, Public Services Department Park Ranger, as the 2019 Employee of the Year. Item 4: Proclamations. 4A: Proclamation designating January 2020 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Collier County, to be accepted by Linda Oberhaus, Chief Executive Officer of the Shelter for Abused Women and Children, Detective Sergeant Wade Williams and Lieutenant Jason Warblessky. 4B: Proclamation recognizing the 23rd Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and Celebration to be held on Monday, January 20th, 2020, to be accepted by Vincent Diane Keyes, Harold Weeks, Irene Williams, Eliza McLennan, Maria Pizarro and Lisette De La Rosa. 4C: Proclamation recognizing Pelican Wire as recipient of the Waste Reduction Awards Program or RAP Award for contributing to the greater good of Collier County by advocating the reduced reuse recycle message thereby helping to prolong the usable life of the Collier County landfill, to be accepted by Trent Dunn, Amy Foster and John Ajut. Item 5: Presentations. 5A: Presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month for January 2020 to Theater Zone, to be accepted by Mark Danny, Artistic Director, and Karen Molnar-Danny, Managing Director. Also attending is Bethany Sawyer, representing the Greater Naples Chamber of Commerce. Item 6: Public Petition. 6A: Public petition requested by Darrell Finn for Kathleen Leonard and Royal Arms Extension Condo Association regarding the closing of privately owned Georgetown Boulevard. Item 7: Public Comments on General Topics not on the current or future agenda. Item 8: Board of Zoning Appeals. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. 9A: This item requires that ex parte disclosure be provided by commission members. Recommendation to approve an ordinance amending ordinance #92-43 as amended by ordinance #92-77 and amending ordinance #2004-41 as amended to Collier County Land Development Code which includes the comprehensive zoning regulations for the unincorporated area of Collier County, Florida by amending the appropriate zoning atlas map or maps by changing the zoning classification of their herein described real property from residential multifamily zoning district to a residential planned unit development zoning district to allow for the development of up to 526 multifamily dwelling units, two family attached and townhouse residential dwelling units or 265 single family dwelling units or any combination of dwelling unit type subject to a traffic cap for a project to be known as Inbrick RPUD and by eliminating the 100-foot wide greenbelt along the entire east-south property lines and eliminating the two-story height limitation described in ordinance #92-43 and #92-77 for the Royal FACUP Plan Planning Community and providing for effective date the subject property consisting of 65.8 acres is located on the south side of Manatee Road. Item 9B: This item was continued from the December 10th, 2019, BCC meeting. Recommendation to approve the single petition within the 2018 Cycle 3 Growth Management Plan Amendments for the Transmittal of the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for review and comments for amendment specific to the Hammock Park Commerce Center, CPUD in Northeast Quadrant of Mixed Use Activity Center #7 at the intersection of Rattlesnake Hammock Road and Collier Boulevard. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. Item 11: County Manager's Report. 11A: This item to be heard at 10:00 a.m. Recommendation to accept the consultant's report on the feasibility of constructing a parking structure at Clampass Beach Park, defer development of a parking structure at this time, pursue alternative methods for beach access and implement planned improvements to the underutilized sections of public beach at Clampass Park. 11B: Recommendation to review and approve staff's ranking of the proposal submitted in response to Invitation Negotiate #20-7689 concerning a public-private partnership to provide a golf and entertainment component at the former Golden Gate Golf Course and direct the county manager's office to begin a contract negotiations with the selected vendor. Item 11C: Recommendation to enter into a donation agreement with Community Foundation of Collier County, Inc. to accept a sculpture to be placed in the public right-of-way of Collier Boulevard at Tamiami Trail East and agree to the maintenance of the sculpture in perpetuity. 11D: Recommendation to adopt resolution superseding Resolution #2008-387 and authorizing the acquisition by gift or purchase fee, simple parcels and easements necessary for the construction of roadway and drainage and utility improvements required for the expansion and extension of Vanderbilt Beach Road from Collier Boulevard to 16th Street Northeast and Massey Street from Vanderbilt Beach Road South of Mockingbird Drive. Estimated fiscal impact: $33,321,305. 11E: Recommendation to approve the award of invitation to Ben Devonburn, 19-7666, New Tamiami Well #39 to Mitchell Stark Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,116,994 and authorize the chairman to sign the attached agreement. Item 12: County Attorney's Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. Items 15A: BCC Future Workshop Schedule. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are to be considered routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the Board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call (252) 8586.